Okay. I will begin with item number one, call to order. I called the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one Regular Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order at seven P M. We'll begin with a roll call. Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Commissioner Benavides.
Present.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Seavey, present. Commissioner Michelson.
Present.
We have two excused absences tonight, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Barrow. Let the record reflect that a quorum is present for the meeting. We'll now move on to item one B, approval of the agenda. Director Justice, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move of approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Michelson, yes, Commissioner Michelson has moved to approve the agenda and Commissioner Benavides has seconded the motion. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Benavides.
Aye.
Commissioner Gay.
Aye.
Commissioner Seavey, aye, and Commissioner Michelson.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item two, public comment period. Residents may address the Planning and Zoning Commission to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Audience members will be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items as they come up, and speakers must register with village staff prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Kiko, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. And if there is anyone in attendance who wishes to speak during the public comment period who did not sign up prior to the meeting, please use the raised hand tool inside of Zoom to indicate this.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you, Kiko. We'll now move on to item three, the consent agenda.
I apologize, we do have one hand raised now. Mr. Bill Shen, you're being added to the meeting.
Good evening. You appear to be muted, sir, but when you unmute, could you please state your full name and address for the record? And then you may proceed with your public comment.
Oh, my name is Bill Shen. I, I'm with, I'm a village residence, my name, my address, eighty-six forty-six Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest. I raised my hand because I thought, because I like to comment and want the meeting agenda. I actually do not have anything right at this moment. I thought I need to raise my hand just so I'll be eligible to comment. If I do not need to comment now, I could wait, I just want to put myself on the list, just as somebody that may comment when the appropriate agenda.
Mr. Shen, if you wish to speak on one of the agenda items this evening, you'll have an opportunity to do so later in the meeting.
Yeah, why, thank you.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. All right, if there's no further raised hands, we'll move on to item three, the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item three A, approval of the minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting. Are there any corrections or comments from the commissioners? All right, I'm hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the minutes as read from the November ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second.
I think I heard Commissioner Benavides first. So Commissioner Christensen has moved to approve the minutes as as included in the packet, and Commissioner Benavides has seconded the motion. We'll move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Benavides.
Aye.
Commissioner Gay.
Aye.
Commissioner Michelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Seavey, aye. The motion carries unanimously. I will now move on to item four, public hearings and applications. Item four A, variance twenty-one dash ten. A request by Alejandro Delgado for a variance from nine point two point ten F one floor area ratio and nine point two point ten E two A front and rear setbacks to allow for a structure that exceeds the floor area ratio by five hundred and nineteen square feet and encroaches within the front and rear setback in the R two zone in the fourth street character area. The property is located at four oh nine Gardunio Drive Northwest and is legally known as lot fifteen land survey for Clark and Cummins, projected section sixteen, township eleven north, range three east, NMPM Village of Los Rancho State Albuquerque, Bernaleo County, New Mexico, as filed in the Office of the Bernaleo County Clerk on March twentieth, nineteen sixty-one. The property contains zero point nineteen acres more or less. Are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? All right, I'm not seeing any. Attorney Winter, would you please swear? And Director Tiffany Justice.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Yes, so commissioners, the applicant wants to build a modular house on the property. The applicant purchased and placed the structure prior to applying for building permit, and the village planning and zoning department denied the building permit application since it exceeded the floor area ratio. And upon further, further review, it was also noted to encroach within the front and rear setbacks, since the setbacks are considered from the property line and from the access easement. And the dimensions shown on the site plan didn't factor in a twenty-five foot access easement on the south side. Revised site plan that was submitted still shows measurements that don't total to the platted width of the lot with the easement. So at this point, the application encroaches into the front and or rear setback, it's unknown at this point, by about four feet. The surrounding properties to the northwest and eastern are zone R two, and the property to the south is dual zone C one R two, all within the fourth street character area. There's a few different factors that we look at when looking at the variance request. The first is for in section nine point two point two five E seven A one. And in this case, variance is and is not in performance with the goals and policies of the village master plan. As usual, by nature of the request for variance, they do not conform with the master plan since the request is contrary to the master plan in the sections that say to follow our regulations. However, the application is in performance with the master plan in the village form and residential development sections. The second criteria, in accordance with section nine point two point two five E seven A two, the variance is not contrary to public interest compared to other houses on this street with the same lot size. The proposed dwelling is around the average home size, and there were several houses that were considered in calculating that average, and those same houses were also within the rear setback or had accessory structures that were within the rear setback on the same street. So the square footage and encroachment into the setbacks proposed by this variance is comparable to the other properties on the street and would be residential development that's consistent with the surrounding area. Bills received no comments in favor or opposition prior to publishing of the meeting packet. And the third factor is hardship criteria. In accordance with section nine point two point two five E seven A three, the variance meets hardship criteria number three and five. Number three refers to the parcel being irregular or unusually narrow in shape. And this parcel is unusually small and narrow, given its size and the zone, property is owned R two, which is usually one house per half an acre. The lot size of this lot is point one nine of an acre. And in addition, that point one nine of an acre includes a twenty-five foot access easement that doesn't count towards calculating the property's floor area ratio. So then, when we subtract that, the net lot size for the floor area ratio is point one three three acres, which limits the floor area ratio to one thousand five hundred and thirty-three square feet, and the lot width is then reduced to fifty-eight square feet, or sorry, fifty-eight feet, which is less than the sixty feet that's considered narrow trepe lot. So subtracting the twenty-foot front and fifteen-foot rear setback, the buildable width of the lot is reduced to twenty-three feet. With a building width of twenty-seven feet, the structure will encroach by four feet. For narrow trepe lots, the code only allows a reduction in the side setback, not in the front or rear where the structure encroaches. The applicant also stated that they met hardship criteria number four. Since a reduced home size doesn't work for their family's needs and due to COVID nineteen and material shortages, the structure had already been built prior to obtaining a building permit and the permit being denied. However, criteria number four doesn't apply as the use is not affected by this variance. Residential dwelling with a reduced home size is still available for this property. This application does meet a hardship criteria number five, that other, that other relevant factors exist. Satellite images show that historically there's a relatively small house on the property. The new structure would be larger than what was previously on the property. However, old and current satellite images also show comparable larger home sizes on the street. They're larger than the floor area ratio allows, and these were likely built prior to an exacation in Los Rancho in nineteen eighty-seven and prior to adoption of the floor area ratio in the early two thousands. The maximum allowable square feet of one thousand five hundred and thirty-three square feet is about a thousand square feet less than the average single-family home size in the U S, and the proposed variance for two thousand fifty-two square feet is less than the average home size on the street of about two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet. For the setbacks, the prior structure encroached into the rear setback by more than four feet, and those same houses used for that average calculation either approach or again have accessory structures that are in the rear setback. And the variance application is in accordance with the master plan as stated earlier. This application is in performance with section nine point two point two five E seven C one through six. But this doesn't affect the zoning of the property since use is still residential, and financial gain or loss is not a deciding factor. Varyance differ is only enough to relieve alleged hardship. Setback hardship sounds self-imposed by the property owner because the buildable width of the lot is greatly reduced when taking into account the setbacks and the access easement, and the reduction in sites setbacks which we've allowed doesn't help since the structure approaches in the front or rear setbacks. The far hardship was imposed by the contractors, they purchased and sold the home prior to obtaining a building permit. No prior application for variance has been submitted on this property in the prior six months, and this variance doesn't set precedence as basis for its approval. It's the unusually small and narrow lot size and shape, and that the size of the home is the character of other homes in the street. So with that, the department recommends approval of V dash twenty-one dash ten for variance from section nine point two point ten F one for your ratio and section nine point two point ten E two A front and rear setbacks to allow for a structure that exceeds the floor area ratio by five hundred and nineteen square feet and encroaches within the front and rear setback in the R two zone and the fourth street character area with the following conditions and findings. The conditions that encroachment into the front and or rear setbacks granted by this variance is limited to the design shown on the plan submitted with the application and confirmed with village staff measurements during final inspection for the certificate of compliance. Future extensions or enlargements may require another variance. And this variance is limited to exceeding the floor area ratio by five hundred and nineteen square feet for a building of two thousand one hundred and, sorry, two thousand fifty-two square feet. Additions to this building or new buildings on this property that increase the built square footage may require another variance. But the findings that the variance meets the requests, the requirements of section nine point two point two five E seven A one, two, three, and C one through six, and the public notice requirements have been met. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Are there any questions from the commission for the director? All right, I'm not seeing any. Is the applicant present?
Yes, stand by.
Good evening, my name's Alejandra.
Hello, good evening. Could you please state your full name and address for the record?
Alejandra Guadalupe Delgado. My current address is six fourteen Gardunio Drive Northwest Albuquerque, New Mexico, eight seven one one four.
Thank you. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in, Ms. Delgado?
Ms. Delgado, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Delgado, would you like to speak about your application?
I would like for it to be approved. I don't see anything negative coming out of it. If anything, it'll bring the neighborhood a pleasanter view. If any of you have seen the neighborhood, this home is much nicer than the ones that are currently here.
Okay, well, thank you. And is there any questions from the commission for the applicant? All right, well, I'm not seeing any. We'll now move on to.
Sorry, could I interject?
Yes.
I believe Albert Chavez is also participating as an applicant. Albert, if this is Albert, if this is Albert Chavez, if you could unmute yourself, then please feel free to speak on the application as well.
Thank you, Tiffany, can you hear me?
Yes, and would you please state your full name and address for the record before proceeding?
Albert Chavez, one four nine Chavez Road, Moyardi, New Mexico. And I am the contractor that is going to be.
Mr. Chavez, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we swear you in first before you proceed?
Oh, sorry, okay, yes.
Please swear, Mr. Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, I can't see you, but I would ask you to raise your right hand.
Right.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Please go ahead, Mr. Chavez.
I'm the contractor that's working with Ms. Delgado to get her house in. So we would really appreciate it if you guys would take it into consideration and letting her have her house. So with that, I'll let you guys vote.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your statement. Kiko, do we have anybody? Well, I should first ask, are there any commission, are there any questions from the commission for either the applicant or Mr. Chavez? Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the raise your hand button again. So, Mr. Chavez, did you not research the requirements for this project before you entered a contract with, with the homeowner?
Yes, sir, we did, but the thing is that.
How were you not, how did this, these problems come up at such a late date, if you were aware of them?
What happened, what happened is that the house was not supposed to be built yet, but with all this COVID going on, they jumped the gun and they had the house built before we completed our permit. So that's the reason that we're in the, where we're at right now. The factory itself built the house without, it was supposed to be built three weeks later, but they built it at that time. So we thought we would have plenty of time to figure it out.
But that wouldn't have changed the size of the house or where you put it on the lot.
Yes, sir, but I didn't, at the time that, at the time that they had the house, that they bought the house and all that, we were not aware of the size of the lot and the restrictions that you had. So if we would have known that, we would have stopped that house and we, they would have built her a smaller one that would fit the, the lot size.
Yeah, well, that's my question is if you had a, you should have known that before you even entered into a contract with this woman.
Yes, I should have, my mistake.
Right, and so what does COVID have to do with it? What is this factory telling you that somehow COVID is a, is a reason why it got built early?
Because of the reason, the reason that they were telling us that the house is built early is because of the people that were, they're selling hundreds of houses now in that, out of that factory. So some of the people, they couldn't get their, their, all their financing and everything done, and Ms. Delgado had hers done already. So as soon as they found out that she was ready, that she had everything, her paperwork all done, except for the permit, and I apologize for that. But they went ahead and built the house.
But I'm still curious, is the, how, how did COVID affect that decision that the house got built three weeks early?
I don't understand that, Mr. Gay, they, they, they're the one, that's just what the, what the salesman and the factory told me.
Okay. So I, I feel for the homeowner, and I hope this can get worked out. Sure you know that you violated you know, one of the, the main tenants of being a general contractor in New Mexico is you're supposed to know all these rules and that's with these people would trust you for that, and I happen to be a contractor, so I know. And I learned it the hard way myself, so.
My apologies.
Don't get me wrong, it's not like I never learned that lesson, but she's sitting here and she wrote a letter to us that said that, you know, this, this really set her family back and had it not been for all this, she, she would not be going into the holidays, you know, with all this hanging over her head, so I hope you're, I hope you can find find it in your heart to do the right thing by this, this homeowner and her family and, you know, just may, if nothing else, just don't do it to another person again, so that's probably, I read all the, all of the statements and all the. I do have one question, I guess I should have asked Tiffany this, but where is this twenty-five foot access easement? I don't see it on their site plan. Was that really just a, an access or is it a utility easement?
So Commissioner Gay, commissioners, on their site plan, it's shown as Gardunio Drive. Gardunio Drive is the twenty-five foot access easement. The plat itself shows twenty-five foot access easement on the property. But then, of course, measurements. I, I believe that there may be some differences with where the access easement is platted and where the fence and the actual road may be. Hence, the condition that should the variance be approved, staff will confirm the setbacks of the placement of the structure prior to issuing a sofa certificate of compliance, just so that we know exactly where the structure is. But just based on the math of the width of the lot, it would have to encroach four feet.
But it's not a utility easement, so this Gardunio Drive that's listed on here is that twenty-five foot, whatever it's going to be called, and you're not worried about that being you, you're saying you're going to go look at it for, when you do a CO or something, but does that not concern you that these numbers on this site plan are wrong and there seems to be a number of you know, errors on the measurements?
It is concerning, hence why staff would like to do the measurements ourselves and to actually confirm the distance from the property lines and from the access easement. We know that the house is not within the access easement, otherwise it would be within the road. We do know that it's on the property, we just don't know how far from the road it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Gay, if I may, this is Albert Chavez.
Hi, Albert.
Please go ahead, sir.
We, when I went and measured it, I measured from where the property lines on the other houses to the east and to the west are at, the fence lines. I measured everything from there back. So I got it as close as I could. There's no survey marks out there. So that's the reason I, I measured the way from, the way I did it. And I apologize again, but when I first went to go get this permit, we got a demo permit for the place and we demoed that other one. I just misunderstood, which is my fault, my bad, that once we had that, that, that demo permit, it would all kind of like ride in with the other permits, so it was my bad, sorry about that.
You're not, don't need to apologize to me. I think you, you got some explaining to do to your client though, but that's between you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any further questions for the applicant from the commission? All right, I'm not seeing any. Kiko, do we have anybody lined up to speak in favor of the application?
There's nobody signed up.
All right, thank you. And conversely, is there anyone lined up to speak in opposition to the application?
There is nobody signed up.
Okay, and Ms. Delgado or Mr. Chavez, would you like to provide any further comments? In response to any comments you've already heard tonight?
Albert Chavez, no. Thank you.
I don't think so, thank you.
All right, thank you. And are there any further comments from the commission before I close the floor? Not hearing any. I will now close the floor for comments. And is there any discussion on the application prior to a motion? Commissioner Benavides.
So, you know, Dan, Dan Gay is, Commissioner Dan Gay is correct that, yeah, this, this could be a very messy such situation. I'm, I'm inclined, inclined to, to vote to approve it just because, one, thankfully, there's no one speaking out in opposition for this because it would be hard to, to just ignore that, you know, if there was, if there was opposition. And yes, please, Albert Chavez, you, in the future, be a lot more careful because this could be a, a really terrible situation for your clients. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Yep, and, and just, just speaking, seeing that the hardship, couple hardship criteria were met, that, that gives me impetus to also approve the application, so that's how I'll be voting this evening. Any further comments before we move on? All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve V twenty-one dash ten with, with the conditions. But I'm sorry, I forgot what the conditions were, but whatever, whatever the Director Justice had, had listed in her report.
I second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Benavides has moved to approve variance twenty-one dash ten with the conditions as listed. And Commissioner Michelson has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, we're not hearing any, we're going to move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey, yes. Commissioner Michelson.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that the public hearing, item four A, the request by Alejandro Delgado for a variance is formally closed. We'll now move on to item B B, variance twenty-one dash eleven. Request by John and Kathleen, Kathleen Avila for a variance from nine point two point seven E two A one. Front setback shall be twenty-five feet to allow for a front setback of twenty feet for a property in the A one zone in the north Rio Grande character area. The property is located at eighty-five oh nine A Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest and is legally known as lot two, lands of Avila, being comprised of tract thirty-two F M R G C D map number twenty-five, projected section seventeen, township eleven north, range three east, NMPM Village of Los Rancho State Albuquerque, Bernaleo County, New Mexico, as filed in the Office of the Bernaleo County Clerk on November fifteenth, twenty nineteen. The property contains zero point three nine nine four acres more or less. Do we have any commissioners who will be recusing themselves from this item? All right, I'm not seeing any. Director Justice, may we please have the planning report?
Yes, so commissioners, the applicant desires to construct new residents on a vacant property, and prior to issuance of building permit, the property was required to be subdivided to be recorded as an official lot of record, which is one of our requirements for M R G C D tracks. The applicant did this and received a variance, the minimum area requirements for property zone day one for a lot size of less than one acre. And before they submit an application for building permit, they're requesting a variance to the front setback for the proposed building, which is a single-family residence. And the site plan has been amended to reflect this request in your packet. The variance request includes roof overhangs and a structure will be moved slightly to comply with the twenty-five foot rear setbacks. This is only a request for the front setback. The surrounding properties are all zone A one in the north Rio Grande character area. And there are several factors that we look at when considering a variance. First is a
Um, first is regarding section nine point two point two five E seventy-one, the variance is and is not in conformance of the goals and policies of the master plan. Again, by nature of the request, all variances do not conform with the master plan. Um, and requests contrary to the master plan in the sections that say to um enforce our requirements. Uh, the application, however, is in conformance with the master plan and the sections uh of overall village goals and residential development. And in accordance with section nine point two point two five E seventy-two, the variance is not contrary to public interest. Um, the applicant stated in this in their letter, uh but there was a home and a couple other buildings on the property within the front. And west side setback next to the road, and those buildings were legally non-conforming and demolished. Um, satellite images showed those buildings were on the property since at least the early nineties and were demolished um somewhere in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Um, as previous structures greatly encroached into the front setback for at least thirty years, the five-foot encroachment would not be inconsistent with earlier development. And the village received no comments in favor or in opposition prior to publishing of the meeting packet. And in accordance with section nine point two point two five E seven A three, the variance meets hardship criteria three and five. Uh, the applicant cited hardship criteria one and five, but one is not applicable, since there's no exceptional physical characteristics of the land that weren't hardship. Uh, but they may have meant number three because they note the lots unusually narrow shape. A hardship criteria number three um does consider whether the parcel is irregular or unusually narrow in shape. And the lots um. Front is considered where it is accessed, so the north is considered the front. And the east and west sides are subject to a smaller fifteen foot rear, uh sorry, a smaller fifteen foot side setback. Um, and the north and south sides are subject to that twenty-five foot front and rear setback. Which uh. It, which makes it difficult for the applicant uh to meet. Normal residential conventional, sorry, conventional residential development. Um, because of the way that they their house is oriented and other position of the road. With a lot averages a hundred and five feet, which appears to be enough for development, but then when you subtract. Um, the accessing with it's included on there and the twenty-five foot front and rear uh setbacks. From that easement and the property line, a total build buildable width of the lot is forty-two and a half feet. Uh, akin to a narrow treat a lot. Uh, again, our requirement, our consideration for uh property to be considered a narrow treat a lot. Is a width of sixty feet. Um, and with this variance, the buildable width would be forty-seven and a half feet. And in both cases, this is narrower than that sixty-foot narrow treat a lot. Uh, the language in the village code has allowances for reduction of size setbacks of treat a lots. Uh, but this allowance assumes that a lot is long and not wide, as in this case. Um, hardship criteria number five is also met that other other relevant factors exist. Um, that when taken into account, indicate that granting of the variance is substantially justifiable. The applicant knows that there's other lots in the village along their road that are less than one acre and are subject to the A one setbacks. And that encroachment into the setbacks is consistent with development along the road. As mentioned above uh in previously. Uh, previous structures did encroach into the front setback, um and the five-foot encroachment would not be inconsistent with earlier development. And this application is in performance with uh section nine point two point two five E seven C one through six. But this does not affect the zoning of the property, since the use is still residential, financial gain or loss is not a sign factor. Variance differs only enough to relieve the alleged hardship. Hardship's not self-imposed by the property owner. The buildable width of the lot is reduced by the accessing and setbacks to what is considered a very narrow treat a lot. Which is known to be difficult to build standard dimensions on. Hence, uh the allowed reduced side setback. Uh, the applicant could redesign the house to conform to the narrower uh buildable width, but the applicant states that the configuration would not allow for standard room dimensions. Um, no prior application for variance has been submitted on this property in the last six months. And this variance doesn't set precedence as the basis for its approval is meeting hardship criteria number three and five. With that, the department recommends approval of E dash twenty-one dash eleven. For variance from section nine point two point seven E two A one, front setback shall be twenty-five feet to allow for a front setback of twenty feet. For property in the A one zone in North Rio Grande Character area with the following conditions and findings. With the condition that uh the variance applies to the proposed structure in the front or north of the property. Uh, future enclosures into the front setback will require another variance. But the findings that the variance meets the requirements of section nine point two point two five E seven A one, two, three, and C one through six. And public notice requirements have been met. Stand for any questions?
Thank you, Director Justice. Are there any questions from the commission for the uh director? Um, Commissioner Gay, your hand is raised.
Yeah, Tiffany, you you made mention on there that you think that there might be a uh ditch. Setback. When are you gonna, and again, this sounds like you're gonna do it when you do a. CO on the property, but. Why do we not know if there is a setback problem with the irrigation ditch at this point?
Oh, uh, I apologize for that. Uh, Commissioner Gay, commissioners, um in developing the report. The applicant modified their building uh their request. Originally, the request was to encroach in the front and rear setbacks. So originally, um if the request was to encroach in the rear setback, it would be also encroaching in that irrigation ditch setback. However, now um they have slightly shifted the structure forwards. They're only asking for a front um setback variance. So the back setback is going to be met with. The the rear and irrigation ditch setback is both twenty-five feet, so both are being met. And we, uh, post-construction, of course, we we do measure uh the distances from buildings to the property lines to confirm that.
Alright, thanks.
Any other questions from the commission at this point? Alright, um, is the applicant present?
Yes, stand by.
Hi, good evening.
Okay.
Thank you. You can see us?
And hear you, yep. Sometimes hard on Zoom. Would you um please state your full names and address, Siz, for the record, um and we'll swear you in?
John Avila, eighty-five twenty-nine, Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest, Los Ranchos, New Mexico.
Kathleen Avila, eighty-five twenty-nine, Rio Grande Boulevard. Eight, seven, one, one, four.
Thank you. Attorney Winter, would you please swear in, Mr. and Mrs. uh Avila?
Did I get you both to raise your right hands? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, would you uh like to speak about your application?
Yes, I, yes, um uh thank, first of all, I wanna uh. Thank you all for the opportunity to uh live it, living here in Los Ranchos. And the quiet and the rural atmosphere that we have here. Kathy and I have lived here for. The last twenty-two years in 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 Los Ranchos and actually forty-four years on Rio Grande. Uh, so we are really cognizant of the area, what's here. Uh, we very much like preserving things as they are. Uh, we have purchased some land that's on the lane where we live currently. And uh with the idea that at some point in time, when we got older, we would like to have more family around. That time is now, and uh so uh so this house that we're asking for variance for us. For one of our family members. And um the setback that we're asking for is five feet. However, I think that about four feet of that is in the overhang from the, from the roof. So, so the actual land mass setback is about a foot. You know, uh that we're asking for, but um so, like I said, I just wanna thank you all. I wanna thank, specifically, I wanna thank Tiffany for her help and her patience in helping us through. The process in getting to this point in the uh uh in this variance process. So, thank you all. Let my wife speak. I am hard of hearing, so I have a, uh, this is not an ideal situation for me. But my wife uh has full hearing capabilities. And uh so if you have any questions, we we stand for questions after she speaks. Thank you.
Well, in truth be known, I talk for him all the time, so. So, yes, and thank you for for hearing this request. Um, we we're very conscious of of the uh rural nature of the of the valley. And and uh the home we wanna build is not uh inconsistent with the neighborhood. Uh, the variance on the front doesn't affect any other. Um, um, residents, it's faces the road and then a little bit of. Of of um land that where there's a garden. And and the, and so we just appreciate, we've worked with our architect to try to design and redesign. This house so that it fits the land, but it doesn't become just a long. Uh, modular style house, so. And and the house, the pitched roof, the that does create some of the overhang. So, thank you for hearing our request for variance, commissioners, we appreciate your time. And if you have any questions, um, but please, be free.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant at this point? Alright, well, I'm not seeing any hands raised or any questions, um, so we'll now move on. Uh, Kiko, is there anybody lined up to speak in favor of the uh application?
Um, there is nobody lined up to speak, however, if you would like to speak in favor of the of the application, if you could, please use your raise your hand button.
Alright, thank you, Kiko. And I'll, you know what I'm gonna ask next? Is there anybody lined up to speak in opposition to the application?
There is nobody lined up to speak in opposition, but again, if you would like to speak in opposition, if you could, please use your raise your hand button. There are no hands raised.
Alright, thank you, Kiko. Um, are there any further comments from the commission or anything else that the applicants would like to add? Okay, um, well, I'm I'm now gonna close the floor for comments. And um is there any discussion on the application um prior to a motion? Um, I will say uh that since uh multiple hardship criteria have been met and demonstrated in our packet tonight. Um, I am inclined to approve um this variance application. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application. I'm trying to look up the number. P N Z twenty-one dash fifty-two. Hope that's the right number.
That's not the number.
Um, Commissioner Gay, if you just, if you just say you would like to approve the application, that also works.
Yeah, that's what I want. I wanna improve that one.
I'll I'll second that.
Commissioner Gay, would you be willing to amend your um motion to include the conditions as listed?
Yes, I would. Make a motion to approve it with the conditions that were listed by the planning and zoning department. Do you want me to read those?
No, sir. Um, Commissioner Benavides, do you still second that?
I still second it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, Commissioner uh Gay has moved to um approve variance twenty-one dash eleven with the conditions as listed. And Commissioner Benavides has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion um prior to a roll call vote? Alright, not seeing seeing anything, so uh we'll now move on to a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Christensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey, yes. Commissioner Michelson?
Yes.
Alright, the motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that uh public hearing item four B, the request by John and Kathleen Avila for a variance is formally closed. Item C um has been deferred, so we're now going to move on to item D, which is bed and breakfast twenty-one dash twelve. A request by Maria Montoya and Christopher Houghton for a bed and breakfast permit as allowed by nine point two point two five E one. In the A one zone in the North Rio Grande Character area. The property is located at eighty-six fifty Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest and is legally known as Lot A one plat. For lands of Annie Robertson lots, A one, D one, and D two within the town of Alameda Grant. Projected section seventeen township eleven north range three east NMPM. Village of Los Ranchos State Albuquerque, uh Bernalillo County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Bernalillo County Clerk on December twenty-seventh. Nineteen ninety-six. The property contains one point six one zero seven acres more or less. Um, are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? Alright, uh seeing none. Um, Director Justice, may we have the planning report?
Uh, yes, uh so the applicants wish to operate bed and breakfast at the residence. Um, they're asking to rent only uh the main dwelling unit, not the guest house. Um, I know the application shows uh the guest house, there were some revisions to the application that didn't get. Saved somehow or included in the packet. They saved in my end of it, but um. They weren't included in the packet, so just know that the application is only for renting of the main dwelling, not the guest house. Uh, the operation has existed since at least two thousand eighteen with evidence of operation. And uh the village adopted new rules for short-term rentals um in June of this year. And the only allowable type of short-term rental is a bed and breakfast. And so since adoption of these new rules, existing operators had a grace period to submit their application and be grandfathered in or considered maybe not conforming. For two uh factors, off premises operator and maximum number of rooms. Uh, this application uh did fall within the grace period since they submitted their application by October sixth. Um, and the request is for off premises operators. Uh, bed and breakfast are permissive uses in residential zones, as long as they have a bed and breakfast permit. Um, there's a number of requirements for the applicants to meet. Uh, the applicants partially met the requirements. Um, some information is missing from their application and they didn't meet public notice requirements. However, I'm still going to go through uh what is and isn't met uh the specifics. Uh, so um the first is that bed and breakfast is an allowable use on, in this zone, and the property does have access to city water and sewer. For conformance to section nine point two point two five U one B, the public notice wasn't in accordance with our section of public notice regulations. Um, the applicants didn't pick up and post sign on their property for the December meeting, uh which is required. And then uh. The next criterion, uh the operators are the property owners and they live off premises. Uh, because the operation has existed prior to June of this year, uh the operation can be considered as not conforming for off premises operators. Um, one employee, a cleaner, uh will be employed by the business. Um, the applicants didn't provide sufficient proof of primary residency. We need one uh more primary proof of residency. Uh, we have one of the two that are required. Um, lodging is shown within the main dwelling on the property and space for outdoor activities is not on the site plan. Um, if approved, this license would not include the guest house. And so with that, of course, four guest rooms are noted in the main dwelling um and in the application and with four maximum. This is uh compliant with uh what we allow. Uh, for off-street parking, um it's required with two spaces for the property owner or operator and one space per bedroom or rental unit. Four spaces are required and is met with a garage driveway and area next to the driveway, able to accommodate more than four vehicles. However, the applicant only identified two parking spaces in the garage. And staff are assuming that that the additional parking is available on the driveway. Uh, so parking requirements for the operator are not applicable, since they don't live on the premises. Bills will not be served, uh they won't have a sign, uh the rules of operation are compliant with uh requirements A through G. Um, the site plan is compliant, um and the floor plan um is also compliant. Please note that the guest house again is not included in this application. Um, and uh the department does recommend additional conditions of approval. Um, if it's approved, as applicant is not in compliance with section nine point two point two five E one. I know prior bed and breakfast application has been submitted for this property in the prior six months. And uh existing operation prior to June of this year allows for legal non-conformance of off premises operators. Um, and uh proof of operation is from two thousand eighteen. This application is in conformance with the economic development section of the master plan. Um, so with that, uh because the application uh is missing a few pieces. And uh the applicant did not meet our public notice requirements, the department recommends denial of BB twenty-one dash twelve. A request for bed and breakfast permit as allowed by section nine point two point two five. E one in A one zone in the North Rio Grande Character area, uh with the findings that due to an incomplete supplemental, the application is not in conformance for section nine point two. E one in A one zone in the North Rio Grande character area, uh, with the findings that due to an incomplete supplemental, the application is not a conformance for section nine point two point two five E one. And public notice requirements have not been met. Uh, before I stand for any questions, I will also uh note that uh, I did receive a request to defer the application from the applicant uh yesterday, so uh, the commission, as usual, has uh several options before them. They can either choose to approve, deny, or defer the application. I will say also that um I would strongly uh advise against approval of the application specifically. Um, and if you are inclined to approve the application, that you instead choose to defer it, uh, because that public notice requirement hasn't met. Um, there are additional conditions that we can include with approval to complete the application. Um, however, the public notice requirement is not something that we can retroactively do. So if the commission is inclined to approve the application, I would uh recommend that they instead defer that. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Um, any questions from the commission at this point? Uh, yes, Commissioner Benavides.
Um, uh, just to clarify things, i- if if it was denied, uh, then the applicant has to wait how long before they can reapply?
Uh, six months.
And would the grandfathering uh of the uh bed and breakfast uh still apply?
Uh, no, it would not, uh, because the application would be a new application. Um, and so this application was submitted uh by the end of the grace period, so they do have the opportunity to be grandfathered in for this application, but the new application, that same opportunity would not exist. However, um, as with any uh requirement of the code, as with the last two applications, you can request a variance.
Okay, and if if it was deferred, then uh then it's still uh grandfathered in in regards to the the non-conforming parts to this application, right?
If uh the commission chooses to defer the application and then at the subsequent meeting chooses to approve it, then yes, it would be grandfathered in for an off premises operator.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and uh, sorry, uh, commissioners, I also just want to mention that if you guys do, if you all do choose to defer the application, uh, that the soonest it could be heard is the February meeting. Um, and the reason for this is because of our public notice requirements. Um, we published the packet about eight days before the meeting and uh, we do a fifteen-day public comment period ahead of the publishing the packet. So the public notice for the January meeting has already happened, so if you do choose to defer, it would be for the February meeting.
Thank you. Um, I think I saw Commissioner Gay's hand first. We'll get to you, Commissioner Michelson, next.
And so Tiffany, the the reasons, excuse me, why you you listed a recommendation for denial is that the property owners, you can't, you did not get to um certificates of residence or sufficient proof of primary red is residency, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
That would have been the um utility utility bills, is that the sufficient proof of residency?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Gay, uh, the utility bills are sufficient proof of residency. However, that isn't the only thing that applicants can provide. They can also provide voter registration, uh, driver's license. Um, essentially, we are looking for um documents with their name and address on it. Um, so there's other ways of providing that. Utility bills are one way, but they're not the only way.
So the only thing that was submitted was a waste management bill, which does not qualify.
Yes, um, and part of that is uh waste management is not considered a utility. Uh, the other is that we require two consecutive uh utility bills within the last six months. So ideally showing recent uh occupancy.
And the the um issue of not picking up and posting the public posting that there, that's absolutely clear. That was available to pick up. It was not picked up. So there's no, that's not confused at all, right? It was there and the applicant just did not pick it up and post it.
Uh, Commissioner Gay, yes. Um, we reached out uh several times over email and phone uh to the applicant to pick up a sign. This is typical, we usually reach out um uh, the day that they, we want them to pick up the sign and then afterwards we reach out to them that rest of that week and then later on. And then if uh yeah, so so we did, we did let them know to pick up the sign.
Okay, and so just just so anybody listening is clear, why why does this sign need to be posted? I mean, in your 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 department, why does this sign need to be posted?
Uh, so Commissioner Gay, specifically, it is required for our code to meet public notice requirements. Uh, we public notice through multiple means uh so that we let the public know when an application is before uh the commission, what the subject is and when. Um, so we public notice through several means. We do a uh posting in the Albuquerque Journal. Um, we also send letters to all the neighbors within three hundred feet of the property, if it's less than two acres, four hundred feet if it's more than two acres. Um, and then we also have a sign posted that's visible from the roadway. Um, the applicant did pick up a sign from for for the November meetings, that was posted. However, uh, the information has changed because it was now going to be heard in December, so they did need to pick up a new sign for the new meeting.
So the other, the sending out um letters to residents within X amount of feet is by your office, posting it in the uh Albuquerque Journal, is that done by your office as well?
Yes, and we also create the sign, we just have it ready for uh the applicant to pick up. We do forward the cost of the Albuquerque Journal listing and the cost of a stamp and the cost of a sign to the applicant.
Okay, so the only reason that this sign is out there is for people driving by who would not be who would not, i- any other way to know that there was a request for some kind of public notice for whatever it is. So it's not the people that live within three or four hundred feet and it's not within people who read the newspaper. It is for all the people who might happen to be driving by that don't don't have access to those two other means, is that right?
Uh, that is correct. I will also say that um it's, it can also be used to inform uh renters uh, because we send letters to the property owner. Um, and so a renter wouldn't have that same letter.
Okay, so it's pretty important that 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 sign be posted properly. So everybody in this community can can have a say in this process. That fair to say?
Uh, I would say so, and it is also a typical requirement of other communities as well. For applications that are heard during public hearings.
Yeah, I just wanted to make to make sure that I didn't have it wrong all those years, but so thanks for that.
Right, uh, Commissioner Michelson, I did see a hand raised.
Yes, Director Justice, have we received any additional comments for or against this application uh in addition to the ones that were sent out with the meeting package?
Uh, no, we did not. Um, all the comments that we received uh are included in the meeting packet. We didn't receive any comments in the interim period between the packet being published and the meeting now.
Thank you.
All right, um, and Director Justice, I do have a question. Um, maybe you could just help clarify what I'm looking at here on the the aerial that was provided. And I I do remember this property from a previous um hearing. Uh, there's the the larger property to the west, which is closer to Rio Grande Boulevard. And then there's an accessory structure um very far to the east on their land, which I I think is a part of this as well. Can you clarify? Is this application for the west or the east house or both?
Uh, this application, I'm sorry, Commissioner Seavey, this application is for uh the west house. Um, the east house is the best house and again, uh, is not part of this application.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Is that a raised hand, Commissioner Christensen? No, okay. Um, well, if I don't, and is that a, is that a new raised hand, Commissioner Gay, or is that from the last round?
No, it's not new.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will now, uh, let's see. Um, is the applicant present?
Yes, stand by.
Good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you. Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yes, sir, Christopher Houghton, eighty-six fifty Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest, Los Rancho, New Mexico.
Thank you, and I see uh Ms. Montoya is on as well. Um, will you be speaking, Ms. Montoya?
I don't believe she will.
Okay, well, that sounds good. Um, Attorney Winter, would you please uh swear in, Mr. Houghton?
Mr. Houghton, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Houghton, would you like to speak about your application?
I sure would. Thank you, sir. Um, good evening, commissioners, thank you for your time. Um, I'm here tonight really just to request a deferral and to explain our situation and and put ourselves at the mercy of the discretion of the commission to give us an opportunity to complete our application and and to respond to to some of the the letters that have been submitted. Um, for the last almost two years, I've been stationed overseas at the embassy in Bogota, Colombia. That's where I'm calling you from. We maintain uh our our primary residence in Los Rancho at eighty-six fifty. It's a set term uh assignment that I'm on. Uh, and and my, our our three children and and my wife are are here some of the time for the first year during the pandemic. All of us were here. Um, but beginning uh sort of like a year ago, my wife, who's a a physician at the University of New Mexico Hospital as an OB GYN, began traveling back and forth uh from Colombia to New Mexico um, to work in the hospitals there. Um, most recently, she's started a cycle of uh going to and from Colombia and New Mexico, working at U N M Hospital every two or three weeks. Uh, sometimes she'll turn around a week at a time to spend time with the kids who stay down here with us. We have three children uh, ages eleven, nine, and six, or sorry, my my second just turned ten, um, eleven, ten, and six. Um, and so it's it's been a pretty hectic situation. Uh, we, I saw fortunately on the website. Probably thanks to the good work of Tiffany Justice, that she posted the change in ordinance. And we realized that the ordinance was going to change the way that we had historically rented the property. Um, we really didn't rent it um every week, but the main house we did rent on occasion as Ms. Justice uh mentioned in twenty eighteen. Um, mostly for Bloom Fiesta and and big events like that, we'd move out of our house, clean the house and and have somebody in there for a week or two um to help us with with uh the mortgage and and just some some extra money. So uh I realized that the ordinance was going to change our ability to do that, and at the last minute, uh, I think between shifts, my wife was able to get in an application. And uh really my fault for for not looking at the application and realizing that it it may have confused our neighbors about what we were actually requesting. Um, we had a pretty um contentious hearing that that I think Commissioner Seavey remembers uh, with respect to the guest house, and that's not what we were asking to use and and understood that the ordinance change allows to previous con- conforming use to be grandfathered in by application. So we put the application in. Um, I realized uh towards the, and and I should say the the notice was picked up and posted uh for that November hearing and remains posted on our uh at our residence, so it's it's stayed posted this entire time. Uh, the only thing that's changed is the hearing date. I reached out to Ms. Justice and and asked her if she would uh, push it to the December date, thinking that I could make it, and I should have realized that the end of the year is is not uh a great time uh for us at the embassy and and uh I just, I couldn't uh complete the application and and apologize for that and and our our sort of extending uh, extenuating circumstances is this situation with my wife going back and forth and and working, you know, sixty to to ninety-hour weeks at the hospital during uh a another resurgence of COVID. And so we really just couldn't finish it and uh realized really late, called Ms. Justice and asked if there was any way to defer again and and understood her position that was already set for for the hearing and we needed to uh see if the commission could grant a such a request, and and she's been very gracious with us. Um, and always very easy to work with, including uh during our first application uh long ago with the guest house. She's always been very professional. I think you act, you have a a true asset in her. Um, let me look at my notes and see if I've left anything out. If if you were to grant the um the deferral, will complete the application, the items that Ms. Justice mentioned, I'll also do my best to explain uh, better what what exactly we're asking for. Um, and just be able to respond to some of the the letters that our neighbors have submitted. We'll we'll pay for the the new notice, we'll pick up the sign, we'll post it as required and and I appreciate uh, Commissioner Gay's comments. I agree with you, uh, the public ought to know in in all three of those ways, by newspaper. Um, public signage and by letter, so that anybody who has feelings or or wants to be heard by the village can do so, will do that. Um, and 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 allow uh e- everyone in the neighborhood to be heard by the 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 commission. We're just asking for a a deferral and and for you to allow us uh one more opportunity, given our our sort of unique situation here to perfect the application and and to allow you guys to consider a full record uh and hear the neighbors. Um, if if the, I I don't want to waste the the commission's time tonight, so I I don't know, maybe Commissioner Seavey, you can tell me what would be best. I don't want to dr- drone on about the the merits of the application, if the if the commission would rather uh take up the deferral first. And if it if it denies the deferral, I I guess I can do my best to to explain the rest.
Yes, um, no, thank you for speaking and for this information, and um we will hear hear from some of the neighbors this evening, so um, for me at least, that that was uh more than adequate information. Um, I will ask now, um, are there any questions from the commission um for the applicant at this point? Um, Commissioner Gay?
Um, yeah, Chris, so when when was it that you applied for the well, when was, when did you first come before the commission with this uh guest house that was being rented? And was that in this period where you were living in Colombia?
No, sir, that, I think that was about a year before we came down here, so I I I started my my work down here February of twenty twenty. And I believe it was about a year before that that we had applied. So it it may have been uh twenty nineteen, the end of twenty eighteen, may have been actually when we submitted the application to to rent the guest houses in Airbnb.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Benavides?
Uh, uh, yeah, I I actually, I I remember the application. I was not on the commission at that time. Uh, I went to the uh the meeting, it was uh, it was when we were still doing our our meetings at Village Hall and you were there. Uh, but uh, yeah, I was, I I just went to 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 get a better understanding of what the uh P N Z Commission is all about, but uh I wa- I was not a participant in that one. But my question is, what is your plan for the guest house then?
Uh, currently, the guest house is just lived in by a caretaker. It's uh my wife's brother-in-law and he takes care of the the garden and the field for us. Um, we can't rent it. Uh, we can use it for for caretakers or live-in nannies or um just guests, and so that that'll be, I I have no plans to to ask him to leave and and he's got a job and he's taking excellent care of the the garden and and building some some greenhouse structures there, so I some greenhouse structures there, so I imagine he'll he'll be there for the foreseeable future. So there there'll be somebody on from the family always on site. If we were to rent it, we we haven't rented the the main house in a short-term way since twenty eighteen, we'd been living there. And then when we moved down here, we rented it to long-term renters. And we did that on a year contract for the first year, and we just signed another year contract, I think in October, with another long-term renter.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Commission? Right, we're not hearing any. Kiko, is anybody lined up to speak in favor of the application?
Nobody has signed up to speak in favor, but if there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application, please use your raise your hand button.
All right, thank you, and I'll now ask, is there anybody present who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
I have the applicant raising her hand to speak. Would you like me to let her in?
Um, yeah, that that should be fine, we can just back up to where we were, and if the applicant would like to speak, we'll we'll hear what she'd like to say and ask questions if we have them.
Hi, y'all.
Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Sure, Maria Montoya. Our address is eighty-six fifty Rio Grande Boulevard. The only thing that I just wanted to add from my husband's comments is that, oh, it's my hand.
Could I have Attorney Winter swear you in? Yeah, you know the drill, thank you.
Yeah.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Please go ahead, thanks.
Um, the only thing I wanted to add is that, truthfully, this this error in picking up the sign was due to my chaotic schedule and my inability to to get down to the village in a timely manner, I when I'm here in New Mexico, I tend to work pretty long hours, and I frequently was getting out of the hospital after six PM and was just physically unable to get there in time. And 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 so this was completely my fault, which is why I think at this point our request would be a deferral. And then I, the other only thing I wanted to add is, I think it is confusing for a lot of people about this address being our primary residence. And my husband can speak to this more, but when we are, you know, since he is deployed down there and assigned down in Bogota, Colombia, we get to maintain a primary residence in the United States. And this residence on Rio Grande property is our primary residence, and will continue to to be so until we move back as a family. And and those are the only things I just wanted to to clarify, and I'm very happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, any further questions from the Commission for either e- either of the applicants right now? All right, well, I'm not hearing any, thank you for sharing that, and we'll we'll jump back into where we were, Kiko, I think I was asking, is there anybody out there who who is lined up to speak in opposition to the application?
There's nobody signed up, but if you'd like to, oh, I was wrong, Chris Reedy would like to speak in opposition, so let me add them now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Chris Reedy. I live at eighty-six forty-two Rio Grande, eight-seven-one-one-four.
Thank you, Attorney Winter, would you please swear in Mr. Reedy?
Mr. Reedy, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, and you have three minutes.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was going to have a time limit. This has all been very confusing for myself, my family that lives next door, if you all, I'm assuming you all have read our letters of protest. This application did come up at the November meeting. We were all prepared, we submitted our letters, we all, we all, you know, did our deadlines, and then it got deferred, which is their right. And so now, here we are in the December meeting, they've asked for another deferral after we've all, you know, spent the time, prepared ourselves, et cetera. So I think it's just a little bit disrespectful now to think that we could defer this item all the way until the February meeting. Additionally, in sitting here and and absorbing what's being said, I don't understand even the need for this application at all anymore. First of all, it was very convoluted and confusing, they did in fact start to ask about renting, or they they applied to rent that guesthouse again, which has been a sore spot of contention, as many of you remember. So now, I mean, Chris just admitted that he's, they've they've been renting the house long-term, there's been several renters in the main house now I'm discussing. And he just said they signed another contract for another year. What is the benefit of having a short-term rental permit when you're renting it long-term? It's just, again, more confusion that just compounds itself on on this particular property. I'm glad Maria explained to you that they don't actually live there, it is rented and has been rented for a while, although they describe it as their primary residence. They don't, they don't reside there, however you guys want to interpret that. Additionally, I would like some clarification perhaps from Chris and Maria, they said that the caretaker, John, a very nice guy, very, very nice gentleman. The renters have all been nice, every, you know, that there's there's no personal conflicts in that regard. But he described him as the brother-in-law, and that family would be on site. I was not aware that he was a brother-in-law. That kind of shocks me with with the current people who are living there. There's, he lives with another woman there, and so I don't think he's the brother-in-law, I would like some clarification on that. But again, the village has done due diligence, we've all done due diligence. They didn't take the time to fill out the application correctly. A lot of Tiffany's time, and and she's wonderful, that's been gone back and forth and absorbed with trying to clarify all these things for us. And in in reflecting on it and looking it over myself, it's on in in your packet, page one oh one, the application isn't even signed, it's not even a legal document. I don't think that we can just keep foregoing this, and it's, I think it's totally unfair for all of us neighbors to keep putting us in this position to have to set our schedules, we can't defer the meeting, I had to be here tonight. I have a lot going on personally, but I had to be here. So I don't think it's personal personally fair, and I don't think it's prudent for the village to allow this to just keep getting drug out and drug out and drug out without really any legitimate reason for that happening. And again, what's the purpose of a short-term rental when you're renting it long-term, it's very confusing. So thank you, thank you all for your time, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy, appreciate the comment. Kiko, do we have anyone else lined up to speak in opposition?
Yes, and I'll be letting Bill Shen in.
Good evening. You appear to be muted, Mr. Shen, but when you unmute, could you please, again, state your full name and address for the record, and we'll have Attorney Winter swear you in?
Right, okay, my name is Bill Shen, I live in eighty-six forty-six Rio Grande Boulevard, and I'm the immediate neighbor south of the residency in question.
Mr. Shen, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, Mr. Shen.
Um, okay, I I live immediately south of this place, and what I, I really don't have anything against a short-term rental, provided the owner are on-site, and the the guests is well-behaved. And I think having the owner on-site really is very helpful for to to control the gas and and ensure they are well-behaved. So my objection is really along the line of this grandfather-in-off premises management of the facility. And you you already noticed, they're a very busy couple, they are, you know, they they have many, they have three kids, and they have lots of thing going on, so the the question become, you know, would they be able to manage the facility effectively? And I have a two general area of the objection. And one of them is that if you look at page one oh seven, it showed that as evidence of the rental, they provide a fire rental activity. But those rental activity occurred during October twenty eighteen, and if you recall, that was the period where there was a lot of contention about whether those houses could even be rented. In fact, four out of the fire rental activity was really the guesthouse, which we went to a lot of trouble and basically proven that was not the right thing to do, you should not rent that guesthouse. And the man-house was in fact then also rented pretty much in the same period, so to say that those five rental activity give them this ability to grandfather in their past because they had this rental activity, I feel that's unfair, but that would poorly executed, and at least the guesthouse portion was contested, and I believe successfully dismissed as a sort of, you know, something you shouldn't be doing. And so that's that part one, so I'm I'm sort of contesting the the whole idea of granting premises being grandma-grandfather, yeah, the other part had to do with how well this thing's been run, we had during this renting period, I'm being a neighbor, I know there were two incidents, one is a break-in, I think it's August of this year, and then in September, there were not a very traumatic event where my, a or my policeman show up with the police helicopter hovering overhead, and police stock was setting in, I'm witness to all this situation, and with the five police officer with gun drawn, go into the house. So I asked, obviously, I'm concerned, I'll ask, why, what's happening, what kind of people are you renting to? And the answer to this day was, this is just a false alarm, that's a one hell of a response for false alarm. So I am I questioned the way the things managed, I questioned the the level of detail, attention to the detail, and I really worry about this off-site rental owner, because I'm not sure these renters are going to be well-controlled with this kind of inexperienced run, a management. That's all, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shen. Kiko, do we have anyone else lined up to speak in opposition?
If you are wanting to speak in opposition, please use your raise your hand button. There are I have Chris Reedy again, but he has already spoken.
Yes, and procedurally, Attorney Winter, if a public speaker has already spoken for their three minutes, we're not inclined to hear them again?
No, he 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 did, he participated in public comment on this matter.
So he may be brought back on to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification. All right, well, in that case, this is now an opportunity for the applicants to respond to any of these comments.
Would you bear with me for a minute, I think the Reedys, if I remember right, they have more than one person at that address, and so you might want to just clarify that that is the same person and not Mrs. Reedy or one of the sons, there's there's three or four some family members that live right in that area. I'd hate for them to get mistaken and not be allowed to speak because of that, so would you just please clear that up, thanks?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Commissioner Gay, thank you for bringing that up. It's kind of a strange world in Zoom, and if there are multiple parties, that second person would be allowed to submit a comment, so.
I would, I would ask Mr. Reedy to use his raises your hand button if there's somebody else at that residence that would like to speak. They have raised their hand, I will be letting them in.
Thank you. Good catch, Commissioner Gay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you please state your full name and address for the record?
Maria Reedy, eighty-six forty-two Rio Grande Boulevard Northwest, eight-seven-one-one-four.
Thank you, Attorney Winter will now swear you in, Ms. Reedy.
Ms. Reedy, please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help me God. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
I just want to make sure, because it hasn't been mentioned, that you guys all received the letters from all of the neighbors, there's many, many of us in opposition. I wrote a letter. The Driscolls wrote letter, a letter, the Myes, the Miestises, the other Reedys, and I haven't heard that mentioned, so I didn't put in to speak because I assumed my letter would be read. So, you know, that's all, I I, that's all we had is a question about that. And I guess I'll let you go with hopefully an answer.
Uh, yes, so Ms. Reedy, Commissioners, all of the comments that were submitted prior to publishing the meeting packet, so the letters from Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Miestus, multiple Reedys, they're all included in the meeting packet. And we didn't receive any comments after publishing the meeting packet, if we did, we would have forwarded those, we would have forwarded those to the Commissioners directly, and then because they're not included in the meeting packet, then we would have read them out loud. However, because they're in the meeting packet, the Commissioners already had the chance to look at them.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure about that because I felt a little left out with that, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Of course, and Ms. Reedy, Commissioners, anybody in attendance, public comment, everyone is welcome to submit written public comment in advance of the meeting as well as speak during the meeting. And you're welcome to say the same comment that you submitted in writing, you're welcome to say a different comment than you said in writing. You're welcome to do both.
All right, thank you for that clarification, Director Justice. Kiko, I don't know if we have anyone else lined up to speak in opposition this evening.
Um, I wanted to find out if Ms. Reedy wanted, had anything else to say before?
Well, I think that, I think one point that I'd like to make is that the Chris and Maria are obviously very busy, and if they're too busy to even do the application correctly and to get these things done, I realize there are reasons for that, but we are, we all have busy lives. And I realize there are reasons for that, but if they're too busy for that, how are they going to even take care of of this rental, and that's you know, just the the point that I think that I wanted to make. And so I guess that'll do it for me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reedy.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Please use the raise your hand button. There are no hands, other hands raised.
All right, thank you, Kiko. All right. Thank you, Kiko. Um, now I will ask, uh, would the applicant like to respond to any of these comments?
They do have their hands raised and I'm letting them back in now.
Good evening again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Um, this is your chance, uh, Mr. Houghton to respond, um, to and, and Ms. Montoya to any of the comments, um, that we just heard from the neighbors.
Thank you, Commissioner Seavey. Um, just, just briefly, um, our, our main request is, is to defer so that we can perfect this and, and have a, have the commission consider our full application given the extenuating circumstances. A couple of points to respond to my neighbors, uh, and I, and I don't have any ill feelings towards them. As you can all tell, we're not the most popular neighbors on the block. But, uh, they, they, they seem to really, um, want to control what we do with our property. To the extent that there was a police called to the property, I think it was July and September. Uh, and I can explain that for the commission. We had a long-term renter, the only one that we've had since we left at that time. Um, who was out of town. And, um, while they were out of town, there was a break in. Our brother-in-law, John, noticed the door open. He alerted my wife who was in town. She came over. She called the police. The police did a full investigation and determined that, uh, there were things missing. Uh, there were many items from inside the house that had been stolen. Uh, it to include, uh, the car that was in the garage, um, which was the renters' vehicle. So after that, the renters, uh, turned on the security system that, and we assisted them with that. There was a security system installed. It just wasn't, uh, wasn't activated. So it was activated and the second call out, we believe was a false alarm. Um, it went off and, and the security company responded. I think because of the previous time, uh, everybody got alerts very quickly, including my wife, who was also in town at that time. And she went direct to the residents. She and responding police believe they heard something inside the house. And so additional officers were called, including, I think, uh, uh, a helicopter. I think that's right. As Mr. Shen, uh, described, and he was there so he'd know. Um, but I think that's what the response was is that there was that break in in July. Both the police officer and my wife believed they heard something. I don't know if it was an animal or, or, or what. Because when they went into the house, uh, there was no one there and there was nothing stolen. So we believed it to be a false alarm. Um, that, that was the issue with the, uh, with the break in. Um, unfortunately, there's no way to control everybody in Albuquerque, their, their break-ins. Uh, and this was a situation where we had a long-term renter in the house and we still had a break in. Um, so, uh, another point to make is, is that I, I, I don't see as a requirement for the grandfathering in um, that you rented it for a particular amount of frequency or, or anything like that. It's just, did you, did you use it in this way before the ordinance changed? And we did, uh, and I don't anticipate that we would use it as a, you know, every week, um, bed and breakfast type rental that, that's just turned over for the next guest. I think it would be more on the, on the, um, order of, you know, we're going to be on vacation for two weeks. If there's anybody interested in renting the house, you know, they could come in or balloon fiesta. That's, that's really what we anticipated, which was, uh, in line with the use that, that we used it before in 2018. Um, and then one other, one other point, I, I, I didn't hear from him tonight, but I know in, in Ms. Reedy mentioned him, uh, Mr. Lee Miestus also submitted a letter. The letter is really concerning. Uh, he accuses us of continuously violating village law and renting illegally. That's absolutely not true. Uh, we, since, uh, Mr. Reedy called us way back when to say that he believed we, we were in violation of the village ordinance with respect to the guest house, we have never rented the guest house. Uh, despite claims to the contrary, uh, we were turned into the village by the Reedies. Uh, because they thought my cousins who were staying in the guest house were renters. They weren't. They were my cousins', uh, band that was coming through town. Um, we've been, uh, Mr. Reedy called the police on me, uh, when I was using the easement. Um, and now Mr. Miestus accuses us of violating the law in, in, uh, renting our, our guest house, I guess. He's claiming or, or renting the main house. I don't know. He doesn't explain it. But it's absolutely not true. Uh, it's, it's not easy to be stationed overseas. It's especially not easy to be overseas. Uh, when your neighbors are accusing you of committing crimes to the, to the village where you keep your primary residence. Uh, the way the primary residence works is, you know, i- if you have intent to return there from your overseas station, that is still considered your primary residence, which is why they say primary. You can have multiple residences and one be your primary. Um, so eighty-six fifty is our primary residence. That's where we move from. That's where we'll move back to. Um, and uh, I think, I think that's all. There, there was some other allegations in there, but I just, I don't, I don't think they relate to this. I don't think it matters that my brother-in-law has guests at the guest house. Uh, I don't think that has anything to do with it. Um, y- you can take me at, at my word. Uh, he, he is my wife's brother-in-law. And that's all, that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time. And, and we hope that you'll, you'll allow us to, uh, perfect the application and, and, and give us consideration in February. I don't think it'd be overly burdensome. Um, and we, we sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houghton. Um, well, at this point, um, are there any further comments from the commission, um, while the applicant is still present? Okay, Commissioner Christensen.
Um, and I don't know if this is a question, sorry for, um, misjustice or the applicant. Um, your brother-in-law, it's my understanding, lives in the guest house. Um, and Tiffany, I don't know if you reached out to him or contacted him regarding the sign. Um, could he have come and picked up the sign? Was there communication to them that the brother-in-law could have come and picked up the sign for public notice?
So Commissioner Christensen, commissioners, um, we contacted the contact information that was on the application. So we didn't know that there was, uh, somebody else on the property that we could contact. I will also say in regards to the person that's on the property, um, if the application were not grandfathered in, that person who was on the property could be considered the operator. And, uh, I believe it at that.
All right. Any further, um, comments from the commission? Right? Uh, I will now close the floor for comments. And I'll now ask, is there any discussion on the application prior to a motion? Uh, yes, Commissioner Benavides.
Okay. So there's, uh, several moving parts here. So, uh, Chris Reedy, uh, brought up the, the, uh, a, a point that perhaps we don't have a legal application because it wasn't signed. So my question would be to, uh, to either Director Justice or Attorney Winter, do we have a legal application?
Uh, Commissioner Benavides, uh, commissioners, I will let Attorney Winter, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But I would like the application signed. I don't know that, uh, it is required, it is not necessarily required in our code to sign the application. However, there is an agreement, there is agreement language in that, uh, ideally like acknowledging the bed and breakfast rules, uh, that I would like signed. And if the commission recommends deferral, I do have a couple, uh, conditions that I request would be included in that uh, to help deliver more complete application. Uh, but I will defer to Attorney Winter on whether or not the application needs to be signed.
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Benavides, I think the applicant has admitted that he does not have a complete application in. Uh, and I think the basis for his deferral request is because it is, he acknowledges that it is not, um, completed. So I, that's what I'm hearing. So, I mean, he can raise his hand and, and dispute that, but I, I think the point of his request for a deferral is his acknowledgement that it is not a complete application at this point.
Well, I mean, I, I see it, I see it a little differently. I, I see, you know, uh, there's, there's a, there's an application that is, that's been legally signed and that has parts that are missing, uh, that causes problems. And then there's not even an application. So where are we with this?
And Tiffany can correct me if I'm wrong on this, uh, but it has been her practice to take incomplete applications. And she is, um, very accommodating to folks that are making application um, by sending them reminders that she cannot process an application or tee it up for your consideration until X, Y, and Z has been accomplished. And there's been more than one instance where, you know, emails or communications from Tiffany have gone out for an applicant to complete their application. Unfortunately, the code doesn't define what a complete application is. Uh, this, this particular issue tees up an area of your code you might want to tighten up. Uh, but, um, you know, she, you know, regularly takes incomplete applications. And then over time gets them completed. In this case, um, you know, it hasn't been completed. And I think we have acknowledgement or confirmation from the applicant that it's an incomplete application.
Here's my concern. I'm, I'm worried regardless of, of how we were to rule on this, it could be appealed. Uh, that could be one reason it could be appealed. Uh, another reason it could be appealed is because the notification wasn't posted. Uh, so it, it's, it, yeah, it, it's kind of a, a strange situation we find ourselves in. Um, it, so, I mean, so I, I, I hear, I heard some complaints about him just renting the, the, uh, the main house uh, as, as a long-term rental, but that is something he can legally do regardless. Um, and then the other complaint I, I heard is in regards to, hey, do we have to go through this process all over again and hear this again? Well, the applicant can do that even if, if it was, uh, if, even if it was denied, six months later, the applicant come in and, and file another application. So, uh, yeah, they are, yeah, this can happen over and over again. Uh, that, so that's, those are the points that I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, I, uh, I don't think it's about whether it was signed or not signed. That was not one of the reasons listed, um, by the director. The reasons listed were quite clear if you go back and read them. And one of them that it was not posted. And I don't, I don't care, you know, whose fault or who got too busy or who could have got it. It, it didn't get posted. So that means the residents of the Village Los Rancho's didn't get to chime in on it. And we do, um, we do have substantial public comment on it from direct neighbors. Now, I know that doesn't sit well with all of you commissioners, but I think that that's what we should be voting for is the people that actually live here and the people that have to, to live with this, these, uh, wh- what gets approved. But if the residents of the Village Los Rancho's didn't get to see this because someone didn't post the sign. And we have substantial, uh, comment from neighbors and it's the same comment we heard the first time. I was on that commission at that time as well. Yeah, I don't know what more we need to, to just, you know, let's do something right here. Let's let these people move on with their lives and not have to keep showing up to meeting after meeting. You get deferred and I'm, I'm with Gil. Yeah, six more months, come back, try it again. You know, better luck next time. But I also could tell you that that not having, um, posted that part of the public permit process. You know, I don't think that's going to fly in any appeal. There's, there's, you know, I'm not a legal expert either, but that's pretty, pretty, uh, big part of the entire process. So I, I think that we need to listen to the neighbors and I think we need to let these people, um, you know, be heard. And if you hadn't read, if you commissioners had not read all the, the, what was posted, then you probably should. Um, and, and, you know, let's do the right thing here. It's not like we're denying these applicants um, the ability to rent their home. What we're doing is putting into this and then let them start over. But the burden shouldn't be on the Village of Los Rancho's or any of the, the neighbors to have to go through this again. So I think, you know, that's pretty much all I had to say.
Any other comments from the rest of the commission? Yes, Commissioner Michelson.
I agree with, uh, Commissioner Gay that we should pay attention to what the neighbors have to say. And that they're asking for a property that they don't live in to be able to rent it and to be able to, if they're there or not there, be able to rent it as a short-term rental. I think, uh, we should, uh, look at what, uh, Director Justice has recommend and make a decision based on that rather than defer. Thank you.
Director Justice, you did mention some conditions if we were to defer this application. I'm, I'm not seeing him in the normal place in the packet, you know, after findings. Um, can you indicate where those are to be found, Director Justice?
Uh, Commissioner Seavey, commissioners, uh, you're correct. I did not include that in, uh, my report like I usually do. I will say a couple of things first before that. Um, as to, uh, the commissioners' points about an appeal. I will, I would say that the incomplete public notice requirement is the reason why this application cannot be approved at this meeting. Because this, that cannot be retroactively done. Hence why if the application is deferred, then the public notice requirement could be met. So um, that isn't necessarily a factor in an appeal because if it were deferred, I mean, it's only a factor in an appeal if this is an approved application. And I strongly recommend against uh, approving this because you cannot retroactively do that. Hence the applicant's request for a deferral. So, um, if the commission does, uh, want to defer the application, some additional conditions that I would request specifically be included with that deferral is, uh, the applicants must sign the bed and breakfast application form for the agreement. Uh, the applicants must provide a copy of their CRS certificate prior to the village, uh, business license issuance. This is not a requirement, uh, if I could just explain, this is not a requirement of the bed and breakfast permit itself. This is a requirement of our business license process. So uh, we have approved bed and breakfast permits without the CRS certificate. Um, but we always, if, if, if those are approved, we always include a condition that we won't issue the license until we get that. Um, so this is more preemptive than anything else. And then the applicant must also provide an additional proof of primary residence, uh, to village staff prior to uh, the village business license issuance. Um, and then the applicants must also provide additional clarification in writing on the number of parking spaces available at the main house, uh, which must meet the minimum off-street parking requirements. Um, and then in addition, just a uh, clear application that would remove the guest house from any of the documentation would also be helpful. Um, but those are all things that would be required for an approval anyways. Um, so the, if, if the commission were to uh, decide to defer the application with or without conditions, these are all things that would need to be considered for approval of a final application regardless. If, if that makes any sense. I stand for any questions on that one.
Commissioner Benavides, please.
Yeah, so I do have a question for Director Justice. So you got a request from the applicant to defer, but it was too late because the packet already been published. I think you explained. How far in advance which you have needed a request to defer?
So Commissioner Benavides, commissioners. That would have been December 1st or December 2nd. The packet went out end of day December 3rd. And the end of the comment period was December 1st, I believe. So somewhere around there before the packet was published, we could have amended the agenda similar to one of the items that's actually on, that's actually deferred on this agenda. They let us know before the packet was published and so we noted on the agenda that it was deferred.
And to be clear, Director Justice, there's no, there's no code in our village that says that, that describes the process for a deferral and how many times you're allowed to do so. Is that right?
Yes, Commissioner CB, commissioners, an applicant can request deferral for any reason and any number of times. And the commission can also similarly defer an application for any reason or for any number of times. Typically, we, we encourage that there be a good reason for it, but it isn't a set requirement.
Thank you, Director Justice. Seeing that there's kind of a lack of clarity here between the guest house and the main house and the application. And I think that's one thing that the applicant stated. He'd be working on if this were to be deferred to gain some clarity because some of the opposition comments do, do mention the guest house. And the fact that we do not have laws that say you cannot defer this many times. You know, I'm personally inclined to, to make a move for a deferral. There's no further, is that a fresh hand, Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, so the only difference between deferring now and letting this come back in six months is that the applicant loses the ability to get grandfathered in to be an off-site premise operator. Which is kind of where this this started, you know, a few years ago. And this is one of the reasons why that rule is put into the ordinance that was finally passed. Is that the village? It was, it was in there that in the future you have to live in the Airbnb or short-term rental. And the only this grandfather-in clause that expires would it, it allow you to have that grandfathered in? If you didn't live in your, your illegally-run, short-term rental prior to this, you could apply for an application, you could get legal and you could get grandfathered in as we'd seen for the last few months of these. And that's really the, the biggest difference. And so if this application gets deferred, it, it goes on to that, that these applicants can they can have a short-term rental that never has to have a onsite operator live in it forever. So that is kind of going against all of the work that was done to put together and get this entire short-term rental ordinance put together. And, and I think that's, that's one of the things that people need to remember. And if you, if you have that, if you get grandfathered in and you have that, you can rent that house forever. Period. So this is not like it, it has no impact on the neighbors. It doesn't matter if you say you're moving back into your home or you don't move back in. Once you have the ability to do that, you have it basically forever or unless some other legal maneuver changes that, but that's pretty unlikely. So that's something to consider. So what part of the, the all of the hearings and all of the hand wringing, all the arguments we had about short-term rentals, that's like one of the one of the things that everybody finally agreed was a pretty good idea is that if you live in the, if you live in that house with your guests that you, that are paying you money, you're propping from them. Then you're going to be more likely to not have problems like all these, these residents have written about. That's going to, you know, kind of eliminate that. Maybe not perfect, but it's a whole lot better than you not having, you know, you get to live in another town or down the block. So, you know, while you guys are all thinking about this, think this one through. If this was your neighborhood and this was your neighbor, then you're going to give them the ability to then run a Airbnb forever. You know, how would you feel about that? And that's essentially the only difference. That, or if you deny it and you let them come back in six months from now, they, they make some you know, mend fences with neighbors. It's not up to us, but it's then becomes a community problem, not just some decision that's made here on, on a Zoom meeting. And I, I don't think that, that you should take that one lightly. So remember that is the biggest difference between the two. You can come back and try it again. You can fix some of your problems with your neighbors. But if this is granted somehow, this deferral and if it gets passed in a month or two months, it's there forever, then, then that just becomes as one of the, the neighbors had written. You know, a, a short-term hotel, basically. So remember that is why we, we worked so hard to get that ordinance passed. And that was one of the, the main parts of it. So I would just like you all to consider that before you make your decision.
And Commissioner Gay, commissioners, I do just want to say one thing about that. The permit can expire. If a permitee doesn't renew their license by February 15th of the next year, it automatically is expired. And permits are non-transferable. So a new operator, so if, if they live there for 50 or 100 years, yes. Forever, they, they could operate that. However, a new owner could not be grandfathered in for the same opportunity. We did tie permits expiring to, and permits being non-transferable so that we could consider each new application with a new operator. And, and then of course, with all of the bed and breakfast permits, if there are violations of our code, we can revoke the license. So it isn't quite like a variance where it's tied to the property forever. There are there are opportunities for the license to be revoked. And the same can be said for a grandfathered in or not grandfathered in application.
Commissioner Benavides, please.
Yeah, I mean, so yeah, you can possibly deny it and postpone the inevitable, which is two years from now, they move back. And now we have a, a short-term rental ordinance that will allow them to, to rent out their guest house because then they would be moved, living on the premises. And again, I wasn't on the commission at that time, but I remember hearing about it. And the, there was a, a, quite a bit of, of objection to the guest house being rented as a short-term rental because it was so remotely located from the main house, quite a distance. So that was, that was a big problem at that time. And, and that could be happening two years from now. So, yeah, there's that.
And, you know, my, the reason why I would move for a deferral is to allow for a, you know, more clear distinction in this application between these two houses. I think there's quite a bit of conflation and confusion going on there. And also the fact that public notice was not met. Those are my reasons.
What is your confusion about the guest house not being part of this application? Because I read it and I thought it was pretty clear that it was excluded. Maybe Tiffany can clear that up, but I didn't think that that was a possibility. This is now a, a application only for the main house, not for the guest house. So correct, Tiffany?
Yes, Commissioner Gay, commissioners, this application is for the main house, not for the guest house. However, you will notice in the comments, you will notice in the supplemental documents to the application that, that confusion still exists regardless of us saying that the guest house isn't included, it still appears on the application that the guest house is included. So I believe what Commissioner CB is referring to is that if it's deferred, the application supplemental documents can be cleaned up so that the report and what we're talking about, but it being just for the main house will be consistent with the application itself. But you are correct that at this point, any discussion is for just the main house.
My point was that in two years, a new application could be filed for the guest house. And the ordinance would allow that.
Would allow short-term rentals in the guest house. Is that what you mean, Commissioner?
And, and then, and the residents would be onsite.
And while that would, you know, we can assume how the neighbors would react, that that condition is really beyond our purview this evening. In my opinion.
Correct, but, but the, 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 the objections we're hearing would be still there and even more so because of the remote location of the guest house.
Yep, absolutely. Commissioner Michelson.
I haven't heard a second on what you are proposing. So I'd like to recommend that BB 21-12 be denied.
A second.
All right, we've had a motion made. I didn't ask for one, but you went for it, Commissioner Michelson. And so I will now officially say Commissioner Michelson has moved to deny BB 21-12 and Commissioner Gay has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion before we move on to a roll call vote? Right, hearing none. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen?
Yes, for denial.
Commissioner Benavides?
No.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, for denial.
Commissioner CB, no. Commissioner Michelson?
Yes, for denial.
Okay, the motion to deny BB 21-12 carries with three in favor and two opposed. But the record show that hearing item 4D, the request by Maria Montoya and Christopher Houghton for a bed and breakfast permit is formally closed. We'll now move on to item five, old business. There is no old business. Item six, new business. There is no new business. Item seven, reports. Director Justice, may we please have the planning department report?
Yes, Commissioners, Jennifer, our public our records information manager and P&amp;Z coordinator, she's working on building permits, parcel permits and magazine as usual. And she's also primarily working on business renewals. It's of course busy season since December 31st is coming upon us pretty quick. And businesses have until December 31st to renew without a $10 late fee. Afterwards, eligible charge a $10 late fee. Thomas, our code enforcement officer is patrolling the village and working with property owners to bring their properties into compliance this month. In particular, we've been working on a couple of potential noise violations. We have a new intern in our department, Helen Gonal. She's working on her master's degree in community and regional planning at UNM. And her primary planning interest is in agriculture and we're excited to have her on board. I submitted the annual MS4 permit report to the EPA in the state and it's available on our website. I'm also working on revising various application forms to clarify the required documents, information. And to include a provision that incomplete applications without all required supplemental documents will not be processed. And so now our website is being slowly updated with these new application forms. And then everything that I mentioned for the Board of Trustees was, did not occur. I wrote that in advance. And so, but those are all items that are going to be on the January agenda for the Board of Trustees. And then I'd also just like to say that this will be Commissioner Benavides's last meeting with us as a commissioner. He will be rejoining the village in January as a trustee. So congratulations on that and
Thank you.
Farewell, Gil. And I, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Do I see a raise hand? Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, Tiffany and I had this conversation just a couple of days ago about how often you can defer. And her suggestion to me is that you're welcome to suggest that we talked about all the stuff she already stated, but she said that I was welcome to, any of us are welcome to suggest that one of the meetings that we change this so that applicants are limited in the number of times they can defer. So that was two days ago, we talked about it. So it's pretty timely. If anybody is interested in discussing that, I, I would be more than glad to join in on that conversation with Tiffany. So anybody else interested, just let me know after the meeting.
Thanks, Commissioner Gay. I, I think this, what you just stated should probably fall under item eight in our meeting, commissioners informal discussion. Hit next and
Don't get that right, dude.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, if there are any commissioners interested in joining that discussion about deferrals. Yeah, reach out to Commissioner Gay and Director Justice.
I'm interested and I'll reach out to Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, I'll say it right here. I'm, I'm interested as well. So please put my name on that email. Excellent. Commissioner Benavides, it's been a pleasure serving with you and
Congratulations.
Next chapter.
Thank you. It's, it's, we're in informal discussion now, right? It's, it's, it's been an honor serving with the, our fellow commissioners. And, you know, I, it, it, I, I know how, how it is. You, you're, you're it seems like you're always making decisions that someone walks away unhappy. And it doesn't feel good. And I got to let the public know that, you know, it, I, I feel for you. But we do the best we, that we can here. And we try and, and we try our best not to ignore the ordinances and abide by them. I, I also want to recognize Jeff Phillips. He was the, the chairman when I first signed on to be a commissioner. He was, I respected him as well. And then Lynn Eby, she was a very good chairperson as well. And I, I really liked working with her and Drew, you do an outstanding job. So it's, it's, it feels like a thankless job and I'm, you're, you're, you're doing a service to, to everyone, all you commissioners. Because somebody has to do it, right? So thank you again.
Any further discussion from the commission before we move on? All right, we'll move on to item nine, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I second his final motion.
We'll let you have that, Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? No, just kidding. All in favor, please say aye. I oppose, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. The meeting for December 14th, 2021 is adjourned at 9:10 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody. Bye. Stay safe.
You too.